This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. This is a typically a work session. Our work sessions are on the final Wednesday at 4 o'clock each month. But because we anticipated that we would be getting our annual financial report done, we're going to spend some time going over that and discussing fund balance types of things, we thought may be better to move it to six, which is our regular scheduled time for this specific meeting. So the first thing on the agenda is the review of the annual financial report. Nicole, could I ask you to pick up Gerald? Come on up. Please.
Come on, sit down.
Yeah. Please. Thanks. So for years, New York State has had a special annual report. They called it the AUD. And a couple of years ago, they changed it over to what they call the AFR. And so last year was our first draft attempt to put in the annual financial report. And this year, we so last year, we've switched from using Quicken as our municipal software to Enhance, which is a governmental-based software. And so we had to transition and translate lots of the data that was in the old files under the Quicken into the new, and then also this moved into the way the AFR goes. So this year, we spent a lot of time going through the AFR, putting it in, making it sure it now matches all of our own records on our governmental accounting. So that these numbers here will match the way our expenditures and revenues work at on our own software. So we've retained a basically a consulted and experienced municipal accountant. And her name's Kathy Person, and she'd been working with us first to help us migrate from the Quicken to the Enhance. And then this year, she spent a lot of time with us going over the annual financial report and getting the kinks out because when we launched it last year, it's my first year, you know, they say it's due, they gave us an extension, we came up to the extension, so we filed it. And so this year, we had a chance to go back and with Kathy's help, and also there was somebody from the office of the controller who would log in and go over some of our entries to make sure that it was they were classified the way the controller would like to see these classified. So that was accomplished yesterday. And so we're going to sit here and go over this because it changed our fund balance. Last year's fund balance showed really distressingly low fund balance. And that was due to an error when the person who was helping us last year from the controller's office told us we needed to classify payroll in the wrong way. So this year, with the controller's help, who helped us online and with Kathy's help, we got to make those adjustments to this year's account. So now we're looking at different fund balances for our general fund. And so that will help us with decisions that the board needs to make with regard to how to close the accounts, the books from 2024, establish maybe a fund balance policy. And then if the money's left over, what sort of allocations the board would like to see that fund that money go into reserve accounts for, you know, fixing the cemetery, those kinds of discussions. So those kinds of discussions without a real good financial report are kind of academic because we don't know what we don't know. And so but this year, I'm very confident that this is a pretty accurate reflection of our current financial position. So that's why we're having a larger meeting so we can go over this, have the board review it with Nicole and me, and then discuss with we have some that we have the department heads here tonight because there may be funds left over that will change how they're they're looking at what they type of reserves they want to set up for equipment replacement and things like that. So that's that's my general introductory pitch. So I'm turning first Nicole to the balance sheet. So it's pages two, three, and four, five, two, three, four, and five. That's for the general fund. So we're doing the general fund first. And could you go over when we look at investments in securities on page two, line 450? What is what is that number?
That balance represents what is in our New York class savings account.
Okay.
Where please, page two.
Page two, 450, investments.
Thank you.
And security. So that's that. When we look at 452, investments in security, special reserves, shows a number of $316,007.2. What is that for?
That represents funds in the beautification, parks, truck, and parks equipment accounts.
Okay. That includes the $200,000 that a donor gave us for a pavilion.
Yes.
Okay. And 100,000 in bed tax money. Yep.
Not not all of that, right? Because isn't there some left from beautification from previous donations of other years?
That's that's the 16, I believe.
I'm just saying it's not all 100% bed tax money.
No, it's 200,000 donation, 100,000 bed tax, and 16 other donations. As far as you know. The next one is 440 due from other governments. That's the homestead housing note, 16,250. That is the money that I can answer that. That's the money that we received from the federal government as part of the grant.
Yes.
And that was applied towards we ended up so the town received a grant enough of a grant to purchase the property from the courtings. We purchased the property from the courtings. We were reimbursed by the federal grant for that. And then there was a balance of $21,000 left over in the federal grant. And we started to apply that towards the preliminary engineering and site plan costs incurred by MJ Engineering. And so they billed us and we got reimbursed. And for that, it's that that's what that means, right? Due from?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if we go to page five. So the eight, seven, eight, it's a capital reserve. That's 316,007,02. That's what we just discussed. Discussed. That is part of the beautification reserves that we've set aside. Then we also have 67,008,38. What what's that? It says escrow.
Planning escrow.
So that is.
That was monies we've taken over the years for specific projects, and it's not expended yet because projects aren't done.
Okay, so 50,000 of that is was given to the town years ago by the Alasapa.
Yes.
And so we're holding that. And so there's 17,083 in other people might up, some of which may be, how much was it the, you know, general dollar or family dollar deposited, right?
Yeah, I don't remember the amount, but yes, that's.
That's that's included in that money. Okay, so then we get down to the unassigned fund balance. Now, Ed says 873,991.34. Are there any restrictions on that? Are there any things that we should know about? Like it's kind of spoken for because we're expecting a bill or something or things like that?
The only thing I would point out here is that 873,000 balance includes 812,000 from NY class savings.
Okay.
The balance in the multi-fund checking account and the balance in the payroll checking account at the end of December of '24.
Okay. So mostly it's the eight, 12, 5199.
Yes.
So is it because of a computing error? How did last year we only have 138 and now it's saying eight, seven, three? I mean, obviously, we didn't over budget 700,000.
No. So what happened was, again, working with Kathy and state comptroller's office, we questioned, if you look back on page four, it's talking about payroll liabilities. And you'll see in '24, we left a lot of that area blank where in '23, we had figures in there. Kathy pointed out to me, we should never have had to put payroll liabilities in here. And I argued it before because they are not liabilities. At the end of the year, they have already been paid. But we had probably a newer person to the comptroller's office, and they insisted that that's how I had to do it. And so therefore, it was about $580,000 that came back into fund balance for this year because of it.
So where has that money been?
It's been here. It's just that.
They're saying basically, we didn't have it because of what we had going on payroll.
Right, because that person told me I had to put it in payroll liabilities. It was making it look like we still owed all this money, which is why I argued it before.
That's money that will be spent over the course of the year.
That's money that's already been spent.
Money we set aside and at the end of the year is left over. That's correct, the 873,911?
That's the fund balance for this year, yes.
For 2024?
Yes.
Money that we have.
Total fund balance for every year since the town has been in creation. That's what the town has in savings. It's not just last year's.
Correct. It adds up over time. What was the argument for what was the basis for keeping that money in 2023 on the liabilities column? What was the reasoning for that?
Well, as I stated, the state comptroller's office made me do it.
Yes, but they didn't give you a reason?
Because a few years ago, they said, we're not allowed to have a TNA account anymore, which is payroll. And so therefore, they wanted it accounted for in each fund, which we do anyways. But again, this this person was obviously new and insisted that, no, you have to break it all out and list what you've spent all year long on these payroll items. It was wrong. We because again, this is is making it appear that we still owe this at the end of the year. And we did. We've already spent it. We've already paid all this.
Okay. So, okay. You mean for the, for example, the 2023 and 2022 column on page four, it's making it seem that we owe that, but that's that's incorrect. We owed that at the end of those calendar years?
That's what it's essentially looking like as if you're the person looking at an annual report. Yeah, you look at the section, say, well, these are payroll liabilities. Liabilities mean you still owe them.
Right, right. That is what I had thought. Yep. Those so obviously those payroll liabilities are elsewhere in this document.
Right, they're already accounted for.
Okay. So now we also have, we can go through the the fund balance balance sheet with Nicole as well as with Ed and Louie are here as well to look at those for a minute. So that is, let's Louie.
Yes.
Start with you first.
So I thought.
Yep, just come on up for a second. You can sit in front row. We're doing page 21. We're going to go through the thing.
You can sit next to me if you want.
Yeah. So we have pages 21 and 22. Yeah. Let's add it in here. Right. 21 and 22. Okay, if you wouldn't mind going going through it again. So we have investments in securities.
Yep, that is the amount in the highway NY class account savings.
And that we have, and then we have special reserves of 27,255,09.
That represents the monies in the highway roads and highway machinery class accounts.
Okay, so those are previous like set asides that we've made towards specific.
Yes.
Purchasing. And then. That's that's the one that's 452? Yes. And then the next one says due from that's 410. It's due from state and federal government, 174,6772.
Yep, so that is the amounts due from CHIPS for the 23 and 24 CHIPS projects that we've done.
That I've already been spent.
Yes.
For those years.
But we haven't received the money from them yet.
We have not. It's due until.
Yeah, it takes a while.
Why are they not paying 2023 and 2024? Why is it together the two years?
Because, to be honest, I did not get 23 in. So it's getting rolled in together.
This is this is 410, right?
Yes.
So 2023 is is two years.
Yep, right, two years worth of projects.
Now, when.
And with that out, we have, was it 91,000 in that area?
So until we get that money back, we don't really have any much fund balance until we actually get reimbursed.
No, it's already included in your fund balance.
So that's yeah, page 22.
Because it's being counted as a receivable.
Nicole, sorry, we're confused. 2022, we didn't get CHIPS. We got all 2022 in 2023. Is that is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We got, it looks like 50,000 more in chips in 2024 than we had the previous two years.
It just depends on your the project. I mean, we may not have spent everything
From the following year.
From the following year and had low over.
Or it depends too on Albany, what they give us for percentages in a year.
Because that changes every year.
Every year. We actually have to wait till around March to see when we get.
Yep, March.
What they're going to give us. They could say one year, we're not getting anything. So hasn't happened yet, but.
And then you have to see what project you're doing.
You have to give a preliminary on what projects and how far you're going.
So these are these are receivables, and so that's why it's an asset. And but it's already been expensed for the years in which we did the work, right? So that number right there reflects an expense that was already taken in 2023 and an expense that we undertook in 2024. So those show up on our expense account.
Yes.
Reports. Okay, so on 22, when we look at so walk us through, I guess, the we understand the restricted capital reserve, eight, seven, eight. Then we get down to the nine, one.
I don't understand the capital reserve.
Okay.
That's the balance again in the highway roads and highway machinery class accounts.
Okay.
So that matches 452 on the previous page. And then we have the unappropriated fund balance, which shows 368,713,400.
Which at the end of the year, if we run over, that's what we pull out of to make up overtime, pricing gas, diesel that goes up. Any major breakdowns? Yep, yeah, it all, actually, my budget really fluctuates on the years on weather. Last year, we had a mild weather or year. This year, I can tell you, we're going to be close because we have way more expenses this year, breakdowns.
So when you're looking at how you're doing, you know, monthly, right now, we budgeted X.
Yeah.
And so the fund balance here.
Yeah, we're, yeah, it looks good for the busier winter we had. So and then I talked to Nicole today about leaving that in the highway savings. So this way, because I have a few big things coming this year, like we need sand. I have a truck that needs all-new tires. I have a loader that needs all-new tires. And we can actually just go in there, take that money out of that. Whereas if we put it in a line item, you have to get permission from the comptroller's office to actually pull it out, and that could take when it was that long. So if we leave it there, I can just pull out of it when we need, because I think a loader tires are like $1,800 a piece.
So I don't understand why we, I mean, that's a significant amount of money. When is it gone below? Like, that's. Yeah.
We've, well, in the past, it all depends on a winner. We go.
What's the lowest that you've gone?
20,000 at the end of the year, a couple of years ago. Probably not when I took over, but in the past, we've been at 20,000 before. And it also depends if we have a truck that something major happens to or not. This year, not kind of what we haven't, but.
I don't know why we're not using that money to pay for the trucks, like we're paying interest on money on truck purchases.
Yeah.
That doesn't make any sense.
Well, again, it's I use it because I'm going to, I'm probably going to use it this year, so.
You'll.
Yeah, they'll.
368,000 additional dollars?
Usually all what I do is, so it depends on the winner. We still have, you know, no October, November, and December for winter too. So gas and diesel don't go down. Truck repairs do not go down.
Right, but that's part of your regular budget. This is unappropriated.
Yeah, but if you look at my past budget, we've gone over on repairs before.
I think we should use some of that money to pay off the truck that we're paying interest on.
Yeah, with the bonds, you can't actually pay them off early, so.
That that, you know, for nearly $400,000 figure in fund balance, that's that's built up over the years, right?
Oh, yeah. Yep. We've had, pretty much last year was the busiest winter we've had in a long time.
This best.
Yeah, three or four easy winters relatively before that.
Absolutely. And I can tell you right now, too, on the overtime, we budgeted for 150 hours, each employee. One guy's close to it right now.
Yeah, so basically, we may have blown the budget this year because the winter was as harsh as it was, and they were busy as they are. And so whatever we budgeted last year using in the previous years may not be enough to cover the expenses and the maintenance of the department. And so having a fund balance is is a nice thing for, you know, community to do because otherwise, if we have to overshoot our expenses this year, our costs are beyond what we raised in revenue, then we have to either raise revenue a lot last year or borrow to get through the year to pay the bills.
So Nicole, was the highway budget done the same way as far as payroll?
Budgeting for the 150 hours overtime?
No, as far as like general fund, when it was included as a liability other years, and then this year, it's not looked as a liability?
No, they they wanted it reported all in the A fund, the general fund.
I only am saying that because we from 2022, we went from 150,000 to 377 all in one year. So again, how did we gain 222,000 in one year?
So part of that you have to keep in mind is the 170,000 that we're recognizing as a receivable from CHIPS.
Can you give us a two-sentence definition of what CHIPS is?
CHIPS is what the state for blacktopping chips in to help the towns afford blacktopping. So our town, we only budget $30,000, which doesn't go very far. So usually $100,000 will get you just about a mile of blacktop. So what they do is they add in what we have for mileage and what we put in, and then they give us a portion. And then that added together gives us all our CHIPS money.
And it's probably an acronym that doesn't really, I mean, laptop starts with B, so.
Yeah.
It's consolidated highway inventory. Paving, something.
Systems or something.
Yeah, services.
Okay, so it's just solely blacktop.
That's all we can use it for. Oh, actually, we can use it for equipment. We can use it for COVID projects, gravel. They gave they give you a list of what you can use it for. I've mainly used it for blacktop because I've been here 26 years. And if I'm here for another four, there'll be roads in town that have not been paved since I've been here. So I try to keep it all doing that to keep up with all our oats. So we have used it for gravel and stuff in the past too. So I may do that this year because 90,000 may not do all of Bill Huber, which I plan on, I tried, would like to do this year. So.
So it's essentially, it's similar to a grant, really.
Yep. Yep. And then every year, they'll give us what they're going to give, they'll announce what they're going to give all the highway departments for a percent.
Okay, percentage of the roads in the community.
Yep.
Town roads, okay.
Yep. And actually, every town sort of depends on the state coming through with that stuff.
Makes sense. Any other questions for Lou? Hard, it's just, so it's kind of mind-blowing that a mile of paving is $100,000. I would question it, but it's just.
Yeah.
That's the reason why, correct me if I'm wrong, we try to keep a healthy fund balance in highway. For example, if we have a storm and it washes out two miles worth of road, there's a quarter million dollars gone overnight.
Yeah, we, so Bill Scufka was here. I think it was one of the big storms. I mean, I think I've talked to Nicole. We spent like 30,000 or 40,000 on just gravel and fixing stuff around town. So you don't, you don't know what it's going to bring, you know, a lot of people, we do all a lot of overtime in the summer and stuff, but or in the winter, but the summer trees are down, you know, all stuff flooding.
Yep.
We're out all summer dealing with that stuff. So and then if you, a transmission goes in a truck, a rear end of a motor, you're looking a motor, $40,000 probably, 30, $40,000, so.
So that's why we should be really cautious about adding additional town roads, one of the reasons. Because every mile of Newtown Road.
I did have two questions. I reached out to Nicole about the 135,821 dollars that was on our previous end-of-year statement. And then we have a transfer to capital projects of 35,000, and then the 100,000 is missing. So I just wanted, you said you would talk to me about that.
So the state comptrollers do not want to see machinery bonding, anything of that nature in that fund. In other words, can't be in the highway. So it had to be put into the capital reserve fund, which is what page? 31, it starts, capital projects. So they transferred the $100,000 bond on page 32 in bond anticipation notes payable. Then on page 33, the interfund transfer of 35,82190. So this is basically covering exactly what we spent on that truck. And it follows. And it follows through onto page thirty-four under transportation, highway, five-one-three-oh-two machinery and equipment.
That's why it's no longer on that.
It is no longer, right, for the annual report, it cannot be in the highway fund.
So if I did the numbers right, it looks like the balance for the highway was like forty-nine thousand. On the report of operations, the expenditures versus the, the revenue, so that's not a ton of money.
What, what page, how did you do your calculations?
The result of operations, page something, I don't know, um. I didn't realize the, you know, what I was saying about the three hundred thousand or three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, it is a large amount to have been, been unexpended amount. But I, like Tim had said, it is over the years that it's accumulated, but, um, so if you go to results of operation, or, yeah, results of operations for highway, um, the total expenditures was the seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-four. The page, the print that I have, so it has page numbers on it. Essentially, the expenditures for the highway versus the revenue of the highway is only forty-nine thousand dollar difference after the interfund transfer happened. So that makes, that sounds, I didn't, it's not a big fund balance for highway for twenty twenty-four, okay?
Yes, so you take the difference between, um, so you look at twenty twenty-three on the balance sheet, there's three seventy-seven, full, one nine nine eight, that's the fund, no, sorry. Three's forty-six, six four four, so it's page twenty-two. Twenty twenty-four, it's already gone up, uh, you know, it's three sixty-eight, so it's not a big, not a big, uh, difference. That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, 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 so. Wish we weren't paying interest, I could take that, I mean, it's like, if we have the money, I think we should spend it from what we have.
Yeah.
I mean, it's six thousand or like eight thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, the.
I don't, I didn't know, we couldn't get out of a bond, but.
If we, if we knew the future, it would be, you know, something, it's, I just don't know what, we don't know what can happen.
Right.
With, and then the town, normally we buy a truck, but has to take loan out to pay for the truck, so.
Normally, we do put a healthy down payment on most things to try to keep that under control.
We do.
And use the version on taxpayers. You know, one truck we bought outright or paid off a few years ago.
Yeah, and eighteen, I think it was.
That was like a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar truck, I think, and we only bonded a hundred.
Yeah.
The problem is, wouldn't we take out, um, a lot of these bonds, um, and they do have a, uh, early payoff. If we pay them off, we still pay the full interest, so you're not gaining anything. If you remember me asking about that at budget time, why don't we pay off the highway shed with some of this stuff with our fund balance? We could, we could, but it wasn't saving us any money.
No, we can't, they're not called.
Right.
Yeah, so we, uh, uh, Lee and I were at the thought production conference today. I threw out, I said, I'll buy another truck for three hundred thousand and the other highway person sort of scoffed. I mean, that, those expenses are shocking. The only one probably more shocking is our new fire trucks. So anyways, thank you. Uh, anything else for these, uh, for Louie or we'll ask Dr. Ed for a few minutes if you want.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Hello, Ed. Forty-two, forty-three. Oh, we're missing forty-two, I don't. Don't worry about it. We talked about this, let's, let's go over that. Okay, so, uh, we, uh, uh, we sat down with Ed as well, uh, to, to go over this, uh, during the day today. Go right ahead with forty-two, forty-three, go through the same concept.
Yep, so the four fifty, the investments and securities, that is what is in the water savings or New York class account, plus any small amount that's in the whiteface water savings account. The four fifty-two investments and securities, um, special reserves, um, has, uh, meters, truck, equipment, and distribution and maintenance funds, though those are also all in NY class accounts earning interest. The four forty, um, due from other governments, this is, uh, represents the twenty twenty-four re-levy, that's unpaid water rents, plus the twenty twenty-four whiteface expenses for the, anything we spent on District Two last year.
That's page forty-two?
That's it.
Okay, forty, forty-three, please?
There's nothing on forty.
Oh, good, then we'll get to where I have forty-four.
Uh, so on page forty-four, eight seventy-eight, capital reserves, again, that is the meters, truck, equipment, distribution and maintenance, NY class accounts. In the nine fifteen is the assigned unappropriated fund balance.
Okay, so that's one forty-two, and there's a difference between last year and this year, which is we've, uh, restricted a, a certain percentage of, uh, the unassigned, uh, fund balance from last year, which was two fifty-six, two ninety-four. We put it in, Ed, Ed has asked us, and we've set up special accounts for, uh, Ed's suggestion and, and request, um, uh, for those kinds of, uh, maintenance and expenditures. Um, one of the things is, so if we look down at the bottom, we see the total for the fund balance, again, it's not a, a giant, uh, difference between, uh, two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-three, um, you know, it's in the mixture. I can't do the math, so. Fourteen thousand, okay. So, uh, so what Ed is, uh, also, um.
I'm confused, when did we do that?
What?
When did we set up a separate thing?
So what happens is, I think, Ed typically makes suggestions on what it is that he needs to hold, he would suggest we set up as a special reserve. For that one, it's in one of those reports I gave you guys, because there's a letter attached to it, that's what we wanted to set it aside in. Because you guys have to do that as a motionist down there, you have to.
You wanted, I think it was like thirty thousand.
Yeah, it was thirty, it was left over, we wanted to do ten in the truck, and then the remainder between meters and equipment. The, uh, eight seven eight capital reserve, that's savings, but it's basically been spoken for, it's earmarked.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not really right to think of it as a fund balance, right, because it's.
Correct, and that, yeah, that's why it's not in fund balance.
Yeah, because it, it used to be that at the end of the year, you couldn't have leftover funds and be for profit because of your municipality, but you could pre-allocate them towards things, so that's what that is. Okay. It's leftover fund balance that was set aside towards knowing future expenses. How is that different from the next line on nine fifteen? They seem, they seem like the same concept, but obviously I'm missing something. So when you set something aside in one of those line items like that, Yep. it can only be taken out for that line item, like the truck fund can only be used for a new truck. You can't just like say, oh, we've got money in the truck fund, but I need to buy this, and we'll take it out of that for that, you can't do that. It's already set aside and allocated towards that. Are you talking about, uh, eight seven eight or nine fifteen?
He's talking about eight seven eight.
Okay. How is, uh, is nine fifteen just what we would think of as a regular fund balance then, or is that, it's because that seems similar to eight seven eight?
It's not.
It's okay.
Eight seven eight is restricted.
Okay.
So basically, you can't spend that unless you.
Spend it on what it's been earmarked for.
Right, nine fifteen is fund balance that can be spent.
Um, um, there, whatever comes up. Yes, something goes completely sideways, and we need to repair it like a big water main break or something along those lines, it's not, oh, we're gonna have to take a loan now.
So the two fifty-six got changed to the one forty-two on the assigned unappropriated fund balance. That's a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars difference between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And that's the thirty thousand and the ten that you're talking about for the truck and the.
Um, no, it looks like, if you look at the line above that, the, the eight seventy-eight, it looks like that was taken out of the two fifty-eight. Looks like both just got separated. I'm looking at that correctly.
But it's only a hundred and thirteen thousand difference between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Doesn't match.
I think. I'm just repeating what Ed said, right, I think it's been split up.
Right, right, but these are not in half, like it's this to here is only a hundred and thirteen thousand, not a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. This to here.
Got it, so there's an extra fifteen somewhere.
Yeah.
That might just be.
Oh, the interest.
Yes, that's the good thing about those New York class accounts. Okay. They earn tremendous amount of interest, like more than what I can go and get from a bank. Okay. Ed, uh, how the, uh, water district relates to the tax levy in general, do you think you could explain that in two minutes or less? I know you've explained to me before, but it seems, I don't understand it, it seems like every time I ask someone, I get a different answer, and I know you've explained to me before, but I don't understand. So somebody will correct me if I'm wrong here, but the way I understand it is, the only tax levy I get is, there's a, they call it an ad verborum tax. If you own a property that is within the water district, you pay a percentage-based tax on your property value. That's, that's, that's what I get from the tax levy. The rest of my budget, the vast majority of my budget, comes from water rents itself, which is only active consumers within the water district. Okay. So people, every, the people, when they pay their taxes who are within the water district, they pay a little more than the people who are outside of the water district? Yes. Okay. Because it's, uh, basically, it's everybody in the water district is pulling in for maintenance and repairing the water system. Okay. Is how that would be explained. Okay, I think I finally understood, thank you.
One final question, the money that you said was due from the water, uh, the fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight on the first page of the balance sheet, that is the refund from prior years that's shown on, um, on the results of operation, I don't have the page numbers on the color copy, I'm sorry, I'm.
Forty-two.
Thank you, so that's where those two numbers are coming from?
Yes.
So the same, essentially, a little bit off one from the other, but that's, the refund would be from money that was, okay, thank you.
So one of the things that I, uh, I'm, I have to say, it's kind of interesting, so we've, uh, uh, had a couple of meetings where, and we had some consultants come in and start talking about our, our water, uh, district assets and the age of them and the cost to replace them and the cost to, uh, uh, they're not available, and, and we're talking, uh, shocking amount of money. Uh, and what's interesting about what I think I understand to be the case, is that in order to fix and replace any of that stuff must come from this fund. So there's not enough money in this fund to, uh, pay for some really expensive part that may blow up up there. Yeah, it would be either this fund or a big loan. Exactly, so, so when we're looking at the general fund fund balance, uh, it's not, uh, on, I'm sure you can come up with a loan agreement between one fund and another, perhaps. Uh, but, but, but typically, all the expenses of the water district are to be handled from this particular fund, including, uh, replacing some expensive pump up there. Um, so the two things that I've, uh, sort of, we take away from it's both the highway and the water, they really have, are vulnerable to a big shock in expense. So highway is constantly having to move based on what the circumstances are, what, what happens and what gets thrown at you. Uh, they're, they're absolutely hands up to the cost of, of how long it takes to get a new truck ordered, how long, you know, blah, 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 blah. It's two years out before the truck can get here, three hundred, I mean, just large amounts of money. And the water system is, is fair, you know, I can't, I can't see how, uh, how to accomplish any kind of a real savings plan, uh, by the town, under these circumstances, to help having a fund like we're talking about with, we can make a down payment towards something for a truck. Uh, if something goes wrong with our water system, uh, you know, we're just, we won't have, we just won't have any kind of savings or any easy way of getting the savings.
Well, typically, anything that's left at the end of the year, we should be putting into the assigned fund balance things like, uh, main repairs, plant maintenance, that way that film fund keeps building rather than just.
That's, that's what we've been doing, that was like, earlier this year, I gave you guys that.
Right, which is still looks like, I mean, you only had fourteen thousand or around that added to your unassigned, so it's, it's nothing, you did a pretty good job on the budget.
If, if, um, if something goes wrong and there's a big expense, it can only be paid for out of, uh, nine fifteen? Assigned, the assigned fund balance line? Uh, yeah, part of nine fifteen, not all of it.
Because it's flush district.
Well, it can be paid for out of eight seventy-eight, it fits one of those categories, Tim, it's like meters or, what, what do you have, that main repair or something?
Main repair, um, equipment, equipment's very broad term, covers a lot of things.
Right.
See, un- unlike, unlike the highway department, where the general fund is responsible for the building, the utilities and things like that, it's town property. The water, the water department isn't, isn't quite the same thing, and that goes. Because we're a water district, we're supposed to be a self-sustaining entity, exactly. I mean, I, as I said, you know, it's obvious, you, uh, municipalities can loan money between, you know, a loan money from this fund to an SWA fund, to SW fund and stuff like that, and we're supposed to charge interest, and we're supposed to make sure we collect that loan within the same year that the loan was made and all that stuff, and it's just do, it's just, it's, it's really kind of a challenge for us. But you've done a great job.
He's done an excellent job, but I, he's got one forty-two in there, and that's in nine fifteen, and I just paid for one part and came, it cost me twenty-one thousand.
Yeah.
For one part, just to give you an idea of what parts run in the water.
Yeah, no, it's.
It's unbelievable now.
Yeah, we're gonna be.
Off our main pump house, the VFDs bill, they're what, fifteen to thirty thousand dollars a piece right there?
Yeah, well, bring that up, last year, we replaced three of those at Whiteface. I mean, they do reimburse us at the end of the year when we build them, but we cover the cost for that upfront.
I know, but the same way with Whitebrook, if that pump house went, it's the same way.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't be reimbursed.
Nope, we would just eat it. Do you have, uh, recommendations for us as far as what you'd like to see us do, so that, to be, uh, prudent? Well, it, it was always my understanding that we couldn't have like an unassigned fund balance, it had to all be pre-allocated, has that changed?
Yeah.
So i- if that's, if, if we pre-allocate it now, then once you put it in that line item, like say, if we put something into the meter fund or the distribution maintenance fund, and something else goes wrong, you can't take it out of those two funds to use it for what we're on. But if we can just, like, leave what we have now in the unappropriated fund, so if something goes, it gives us a little more leeway, if you guys are open to that. I think we all would be, but how do we get additional money to put in there in the first place?
That's why we need to rent.
That. That's basically it.
That was the concept of increasing all those things of, um.
So you, there is no, nothing further that you'd recommend us to do, other than what we've already done? Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Nope. Anything further for Ed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else want? No. So that's pretty much what I wanted to discuss tonight with the board. If there's any other specific questions about this. You know, I want to, I think personally it's very helpful to us that we have a real good set of numbers that we can look at and, and then base, base decisions on. And the thing that I put on the agenda next is to, you know, talk about fund balance policy. And I sent out copies from Keen and I sent out copies from Essex. I sent out a PowerPoint presentation that I got at the controllers, the, the, the New York State Towns Accounting and Personnel Workshops I went to last week. And, you know, they recommend, and it, it's probably a good idea that the town try to set some baseline goal to keep a fund balance at a certain level as a cushion. And if there's anything over that, they can appropriate it to, you know, special reserve accounts for specific capital projects. And I had sent an email to, you know, I mean, if, if it were up to me, I'd like to see something for the cemeteries. I'd like to see something for homes, that houses, we set aside some money for those projects out of the general fund fund balance. But, but we need to sort of discuss and decide whether we, as a board, want to adopt a fund balance policy, what the amount should be. It's not, nothing's ever really written and it's done, it's more guidelines. So that if we set a fund balance policy of five hundred thousand dollars, for example, and one year we had to dip into it a lot because we had a lot of surprising expenses. You know, the, the idea would be that somehow or other we would work our way back up to the five hundred thousand dollars. Because we figured that that was a good pushing for the town to use in case of, of a surprise. The way in which a number of towns use, they use the contingency line in the budget. And if they don't have any contingencies for one year, they, that, that money goes to the fund balance for next year. So if we had a contingency of forty thousand dollars and nothing happened in that year of the budget, that would just sort of be moved into fund balance at the end of the year. And other types of ways of, you know, helping to maintain a sort of a level of fiscal, fiscal solvency. So that was what's on the thing I've sent out things. I'd like to hear from the board what we'd like to do going forward. We need to, if we can establish this, then we can discuss at the next meeting what to do with the reserves, the reserves need to be set up for the fund balance that we have, especially in the general fund. I think the other ones are, as you hear, sort of speculative that we talked about. You know, and it's got a hundred point two to lose, expecting it's going to be a more expensive year because they have a lot more overtime. But for us, the general fund, it looks like we have perhaps some options to do something.
Go ahead, Tim. Thanks, thanks. So we just got this yesterday and I haven't reviewed the draft, final report from twenty twenty four as much as I would have liked to have. Is, is the unspent bed tax money, is that just in the general, is that, is that showing up as fund balance?
Yep, we have to appropriate it. We have to put it in the beautification fund, right?
No, no, no. What happens with bed tax, pardon me, I'm sorry. Okay, so years ago, some of it did get appropriated by the previous board into, into the beautification. That was an act of the board. What happens with bed taxes, and this is kind of something we all, in other words, at the county is the, the, the county says it's for community enhancement. But they don't have any kind of mechanism to create the reserve account telling us we have to make a reserve account. So what ends up happening is if we don't spend it for the community enhancement in that same year, the rest, what's ever left over goes to so it's fund balance.
That's not what we were told.
We've been told a lot of different things over, so it, it, does it show up anywhere else in this document, that number of unspent bed tax? No. Can we, can you provide us with the total amount of unspent bed tax we have?
I've given the board everything we've collected in bed tax.
What do you mean?
I had, I created a spreadsheet. I got it from the county. We have an update of how much Wilmington has collected since they started giving Wilmington money from the bed tax.
But that doesn't, that, that doesn't demarcate what's been spent, so we don't know how much we have currently.
We only have last year's because everything else is in fund balance.
But I think we discussed putting, like you said that we had to allocate it, we, if it wasn't spent, the board in January had to go through and set it aside and put it in, right, I, I mean.
Whatever, whatever you choose to put it to.
Right, otherwise it is rolled over into general fund.
So are we just treating it then as tax money, property tax money, or any other kind of revenue? Because, because that seems to be what has happened. It's in the, it's lumped in with everything else and it's not separated. We don't know how much there is, so I, I guess we can spend on whatever we like because it's just fund balance. That seems to be what has happened.
At the end of the year, yes, if you haven't allocated it for something else, it is now fund balance.
Okay, okay.
So what about the fund balance? You guys have any thoughts on what they're going to do with the policy or something?
Essex County, and I brought this up a couple of different times, this statement right there, that's from the, this document.
Yeah, I know, will be required. Be honest with you, the county has enough. That's all.
That's where we, this discussion came from a couple of months ago.
Oh, I understand. The county, the county would like to audit us, maybe municipalities on what they're doing with the money. County would do this, but the county is eighteen supervisors from towns who get quarterly checks of the bed tax. And supervisors typically would rather go see, see it go into fund balance. It's they don't want, they like to have the freedom to do something different with it. That's the county's problem. From our point of view, you know, they, they, you know, we, it's not a restricted, the county hasn't told us we have to set up a special reserve fund. County hasn't done any of that stuff. They just want us to, they want to find out what we're doing with them. They don't want us to spending it on light panels and things, but, but if it's in fund balance, it's a whole different thing at that point. So this year, we budgeted eighty something thousand and we're using it towards things that I think are perfectly within what the county wants us to do with.
Yep.
And then we have some extra leftover and that would go into fund balance. And then we're getting our receipts this year and bed taxes down accordingly again, whatever, we'll find out. So, you know, will it meet what we've budgeted to, you know, as an appropriation for the various projects we've, you know, paid? We got a generator, we have a new dump truck, actually we budgeted for the, for the parks trailer and things like that. That was already budgeted in, in the regular parks accounts. So it's really, you know, it really, from my point of view, unless we want to appropriate it for something specific like that, I would rather see us just let it roll into fund balance and then we have to be able to use it for maybe other types of things as well.
Or things come up throughout the year, we can appropriate at different times throughout the year.
Yep.
If we think we're going to have an excess above the doubt.
Yeah. No, sorry. You know, I mean, something comes up, we go to paper. So we, we, but you know, so we've already budgeted, we've done our best, but.
I mean, one of the things that we did this past year was we cut our sidewalk line.
Yeah.
Well, maybe sidewalks somewhere, and I'm not saying they did, you know, took it hard during the winter and really has to do a bunch of sidewalk repairs where that can be used to pay for that since we don't have a sidewalk line anymore.
It makes sense. It's just, this is different than the previous conversations we had because when we had talked about spending this bed tax money on things that were not necessarily completely unequivocally a hundred percent related to tourism, there was a lot of pushback from the rest of the board, but now we're just putting anything that hasn't been spent into the general fund, into unassigned fund balance, and it can be spent. Now, now what the board is saying is it can be spent on.
Not during the calendar year.
Correct. You're confusing the two. When that conversation happened during budget season when we're saying, okay, where do we want to allocate this? We're saying we can only spend it on these specific things. But once it becomes fund balance, now it's a different story.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. That's new information, but yes, it does make sense.
All right, I'm circling back to the fund balance policy. Anybody have any thoughts on this? I sent you both Keen's and this is from the town of Essex. It's the one that's really wordy. And the town of Keen, the Keen, Keen did something different, which is they set a raw number of, so the general fund will have nine hundred thousand dollars in it. And nine hundred thousand dollars represents fifty percent of what Keen appropriates under its general fund. And then it goes after that, if there's any money left over after that, we, we hereby designate that it'll be paid towards this, it'll be paid towards debt and things like that. So that was one sample that I, I've sent to the board. And then the other sample is just kind of a, a general, so the town of Essex. It's wild, but the town of Essex established a minimum unassigned fund balance of one hundred percent of its annual appropriations. So for the general fund, for us, that would be a fund balance of one point two million dollars. And I, I think that's crazy. So I think that, that's sitting there with taxpayers' money sitting doing something else. So I, I took that out and then I went with a percentage. At my, at my training conference last week, the controller seems to think fifteen, twenty percent is sufficient, but I don't think that's right either. So I think that's too low. And so I threw out a number, but you know, it's, you know, we can discuss what, what we think would be appropriate as a board and select some sort of basic policy so that we each year a board can look at and say, oh my gosh, we've totally blew through our fund balance. We better find ways of getting it back up. That could, so good. Anybody?
Just a couple of things to circle back to on, on some of this. This fund balance now, obviously, we didn't know that it was that much as of last year because of payrolls. The second part of that is three-ish, four years ago, we had to put out six hundred thousand dollars cash for our bond.
Yep.
And it took that long to get reimbursed for that money. So at that time, when we didn't have that six hundred thousand dollars in there, the town basically had no fund balance. Once we finally got reimbursed that money, then we had a fund balance. Again, well, again, we did not know that it was in the excess of what it is now based upon the payroll accounting, the way the controller.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So, you know, based on projects like the dam, we've seen situations where six hundred thousand dollars is barely enough to cover a grant or something that we have to cover because all grants and stuff, the town has to lay out the money ahead of time. So if we only had two hundred thousand dollar fund balance, it would almost make us ineligible for most grants because we're not able to cover our portion of expenses until we get reimbursed. So I, I know that the comptroller has said that type of stuff before. Randy had went round and round with them, Roy had went round and round with them, and basically it's not realistic. If you're maybe Lake Placid and you have a twenty million dollar budget and you have a fund balance of two million dollars, you know, maybe that's realistic, but on a town our size, when you have some bigger projects coming, a twenty percent reserve is basically nothing.
Yeah.
So the, the bare minimum I would like to see is at least fifty percent of our annual, because again, we've shown that in the past five years, we need at least fifty percent, and that was just for the dam. I mean, if something happened to our, our town hall or anything like that, and we had to scramble to get money together, it's just irresponsible not to have some money to be able to take care of projects like that.
I will mention it's also on the, I don't know if it's on the, on the list, but you'll see that I have authorized supervisor to re-execute the revised grants contract. That's a sedimentation study. So the last contract that you authorized and I signed and sent out to state said, no, we have two agencies now, so we need to schedule A one and then schedule A two. And then they finally got it to me. And that, that grant is requiring a local contribution of a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. And, uh, say, well, freshwater center has a separate agreement with the towns that they work with that they will get the funding for that separately and it won't be coming out of the town funds. But at the same time, if we don't have a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars and somebody presents the town with the bill, you know, they'll be looking at our annual financial report to look and see if we have a fund balance on it to cover. They haven't signed the contract yet. So this is what, this is what they use it for. They'll look at, they'll look over the town to see whether it has enough stumpy to make a contribution towards the, you know, the cost of the grant because all grants are shared. And nobody's giving a hundred percent stuff. So that's why Darren, Darren's point is a good one because, you know, quite, last year, I'll tell you what, I thought, oh my God, you know, a hundred thousand dollars as a fund balance, that's, that was shocking. But I'm happy to see that, you know, it was a mistake that they made and we've got it corrected. So anyone else, Tim, you have any thoughts on?
Okay, um. Chris, if something catastrophic happens, that's really where we look to taking out a bond, not relying on fund balance to deal with that.
It's not immediate though.
So let's say we have six hundred thousand in fund balance and something catastrophic happens. Can we go through the steps of what happens? I mean, obviously the bond won't come immediately, but perhaps reconstruction doesn't start immediately. Reconstruction didn't start immediately when the highway roof.
Can I take this or?
Yeah.
So there's a couple of things. You're not wrong, Tim. We can definitely take that. However, anytime that we take a bond, that adds a debt liability to the town, which is now going to be a payment. If there's a six hundred thousand dollar anything, if there's a six hundred thousand dollar bill from something major that happened, the next year, the budget's going to go way up because if we just took that bond, now we need to make up a six hundred thousand dollar payment. Where if we have this already in savings, we don't need to hit the taxpayers all at once because we can take care of that without raising taxes to the taxpayers by having a fund balance. I mean, it can be looked at both ways. You look at it as, well, that's taxpayers' money and we're not spending it until there's a problem and now all of a sudden, now we're hitting taxpayers' budgets with a ten percent increase in taxes because we didn't have any fund balance to cover the bond we just took out.
If it's all right, I'll circle back to the highway roof garage. So when that happened, we now had the building exposed. Rain and everything else was getting in there. So we did have to start some sort of work right away to secure things for them. We had to pay that money out front until the insurance finally decided, well, this is what we'll give you. That's just a, for instance, we couldn't really wait. We had to do something to secure the building.
Right, I, I don't think anyone in this room, probably anyone in this town would argue against having fund balance and that it's prudent to have as much fund balance as we possibly can. The only issue I really have or the fear I have is that. Uh, this policy will be used as a justification for, uh, going past the tax cap in the future. Because we are below whatever number we set in fund balance. So that, that's my fear and that's why I'm leery of this. I didn't think, since I've been on the board, I, I haven't thought that it was necessary to override the tax cap. And I, I hope that we don't continue overriding the tax cap in the future. And I'm afraid that this will be used as justification to do that in the future. Laura?
There, um, language that we could add in here that, um. You know, we wouldn't, the balance, we could utilize that before that we would have to add to the taxes. Like it wouldn't be, it would be only if we had this much available at the end rather than. Cause I, I see that you've talked about adding a, um, tax stabilization reserve. That could be utilized. Like if we set up a reserve for that, it could help under, help us prevent going over the tax cap if we have that, that was set aside. But I don't, honestly, it's a little great to me. I, I wouldn't have, I don't have enough opinion on it. I, I would rather, um, I, I mean, fifty percent is better than thirty percent. But I mean, we're almost at the thirty percent on a cup, or at thirty percent. I mean, some of those.
Fifty-five percent or we have fifty percent.
So, okay, so if this is the actual appropriation from last year.
I mean, our fund balance.
Yeah. And then, then what I did was I just started to, uh, just throw in numbers at thirty percent.
I understand this, but.
Yeah, I, I left this on to.
Okay. But I'm saying what we have currently set aside in fund balance, like what our unexpended monies are.
Right.
Some of these funds are at or near that level. It's not surpassing that.
Yeah, that's right.
So we wouldn't need to continue to contribute to them as we've gotten to that amount.
That's right.
Right?
Right.
I mean, so the idea is if we said, uh, you know, it doesn't have to grow, right? We, we would say, okay, we've set fifty percent of the, of annual appropriations. And then we have more than fifty percent. Well, then what we should be doing with that money is paying down tax.
Right.
Or putting it aside for cemetery and things like that. So, I mean, it gives the board some chances to sit there and, uh, uh, not raise taxes, but use funds. Over and above what they've sort of suggested as the minimum fund balance. Uh, so that they could, uh, uh, make these improvements, pay for these things without necessarily asking taxpayers. That's, that's kind of the theory. And that's why they, they, they recommend municipalities do these things.
What percentage are we at now? According to the math I'm doing, we're higher than fifty percent now. Is that incorrect?
I think we are. So that's why I also brought up the, you know, have a discussion if, if we decide it's fifty percent. Best policy and then we have money left over, then we have to decide what to do with that money that's left over.
Contingency, I think is capped at ten percent, ten percent.
I don't know what we do.
I mean, I think by, by state, I think that they, something about.
Oh, yeah, I forget what it is. In any case, um, so you know, then we can have that discussion about, all right, and I'll say I'm voting for the cemetery. Or something like that.
If we do have extra that's, if it's above fifty percent, then really we should earmark that to avoid going over the tax cap in twenty twenty-six.
We, so what, what ends up happening is we haven't closed the books in twenty twenty-four. So we set a fund balance policy, got it here. Then when we're closing the books, then, then we can sit there and make the decisions on where to, you know, do, uh, reserve those funds. I mean, you'd, you'd like to back over the tax gap, that's.
Isn't that what we're doing again? Closing, this is the annual financial report. Isn't that the?
No, no, I don't, I think we need to, because we haven't established what the fund balance is. And then what to do with any money left over.
So we're going to get another annual financial report?
No, the annual financial report is gone. I mean, that's for the state. That's, um. So that gets filed with the state. They review it. They kick it back. They find out they got problems, but I have to certify it.
Doesn't that mean the books are closed though?
No.
No, we're not closed.
No, no, they want the annual financial report. The books are completely, the, the books are, uh, you know, not going to change. These are what the bits are based, but we still have to decide what to do with the money.
Right.
Then that closes the books.
Okay. But the numbers aren't going to change. This is a future conversation, but the numbers will remain the same, right?
Exactly.
Great. Okay.
And this is what we have. How was that? I don't understand.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Um, page five.
Because this.
I'm sorry, what do we look at it?
We're just trying to figure out what our fund balance is right now, percentage, so.
Okay.
Do you have your calculator? You did bring your calculator.
So these are, these are the appropriations. So this is what we budgeted for the appropriations. So eight seventy-three out of one point two million.
Correct. Do I understand that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that.
All right, fair enough. I'll leave you alone.
I don't know what it's doing, to be honest. I would have to dissect that. There's gotta be a piece missing there.
So Nicole, I have, let you know what I'm thinking.
Yes, yeah, I do.
Cause if we're at this, that's saying we're at this.
So I had thought that these numbers will change and this is just a draft, but this, as far as anyone.
That's what I'm saying. I don't understand.
This, this is my, this is not.
Unless they kick it back to us.
Which they generally do.
Okay, something's wrong.
Um, once it's final submitted to the state. One of their auditors will look it over and they usually get back with questions and then they'll want to change something. But hopefully, we don't have that this year.
It's a draft and it's ready to watch on our end. And then we'll get way to your back.
So until we really hear back from them to make sure that these figures are accurate on their end. Um, and they run it through their software, it's hard to know exactly what our fund balances are for until maybe next meeting.
Are we generally seeing fifty percent seems more or less agreeable? Just as a general policy.
To be honest, I don't think your fund balances are going to change. The things that typically change on a, on an annual report are, like I mentioned earlier. Not reporting, uh, the purchase of highway equipment and having it in the highway fund.
I don't understand that because. This is saying that we have a million dollars right now in fund balance. That means we have a hundred percent.
No.
That's what it says.
No, you, you need to look at nine seventeen on page five. That's your unassigned fund balance, which is eight seventy-three. Nine one thirty-four.
Right.
That's your fund balance.
The other ones are in reserve in New York class.
Correct, but that's still.
We're still over fifty percent though.
Yes, we're at about sixty percent, sixty-sixty-five, I'd guess, sixty-sixty-five percent is where we're at. And so to answer your other question, the difference between those two balances on page five. Is the fifty thousand dollars that you got on the bottom of page four. That's the difference. Sure, your accounts payable group insurance.
So just the three districts that you're suggesting?
I, I'd be honest with you, um, because, because it appears that we have. Money that's left over on the, the, under the general fund. I'm, I'm a little nervous about setting a policy with such a volatile set of accounts as the highway and the water. Plus they're not that close anyway. They don't have that much. I mean, we, we, we now, uh, have, you know, some decisions to make. Let's decide it at fifty percent. To close the books to two thousand forty-four. So I don't know. After, you know, talking with Louis and, and, and it makes me nervous because there's too many variables that I can't factor in my head. We, our variables, our, our health insurance is not going to go up a mere four percent like it did last year. It's going to go up seventeen percent. And then next year we're going to be looking at something proper. I mean, those are the things I can sort of factor in my head as changes in our budget. Um, water and highway, they have, uh, natural events occurring left and right and, uh. You know, like, you know, the pumps go and the highway trucks go. Um, and, and that is something I'm just not that comfortable telling them, oh yeah, we should set it at, uh. Forty percent fund balance and not a, or whatever it is.
Well, if we did thirty general, thirty highway, thirty water and ten for contingency, that's a hundred percent. Of our operating budget, right?
I don't understand. Why would you allocate it that way?
Cause you've got thirty for general or fifty for general, thirty for general. So we would have a hundred percent. Am I doing the math correctly? We did a ten percent contingency, thirty percent of the budget for general, thirty percent for highway, thirty percent for water. That's total.
We'd have our total savings for the town, but not any one department.
Well, it's thirty percent split up between the, the three major departments and then that ten percent contingency, which is. What they're recommend for a contingency.
Favor has it down here and thirty percent would be three sixty-seven. So you're at six seventeen plus sixty-six. So no, you'd only be at seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, plus it's only of that specific operating budget, not the whole budget. Okay, excuse me.
Yeah. Plus, plus I don't think, I think the contingency wars operates during our budget. Where we set aside a contingency fund for that particular year that doesn't have any specific.
We don't have a reserve.
Restriction. That's right. A contingency is a line item in our budget that says, oh folks, we gotta pay for something and we don't have it. Uh, in the parks department under this one. So we could go raid it there without going to get, uh, out of fund balance. It's sort of like it. But at the end of the year, the contingency just rolls into fund balance. And then, uh, you know, it just becomes fund balance and then next year we can put a contingency in like that. That's the, that's like the current account kind of thought. We don't have to do that here. They're all, that's all contingency. So far as I can tell, the unappropriated fund balance is a contingency again.
Move to the table.
Okay.
Okay, um. Hit until when, Brian asked that?
The regular meeting is defined. I just.
Well, how about, how about before we, you know, do that, let me just talk about. If, if you want to rewrite it and things like that, I'd be happy to revisit this at the next meeting. Um, if you want to look at that fund balance policy, say, let's make it fifty percent. I like teens better. Can we do this? And I, you know, I would appreciate that kind of, you know, feedback from the board. Uh, so yeah, I don't have a problem table. This, the question is, uh, whether we're adopting a fund balance policy tonight. I didn't make a resolution to make that yet, but consider it tabled. So that's it for that. Um, uh, I'm going to skip budget modifications and amendments for the next meeting. Uh, I've only found one or two so far and I'll, I'll tip them to the board, uh, for a regular meeting. Uh, there are two contracts. I'm asking that the board authorize me to re-execute the revised New York State grants contract. And memorandum of understanding with the Ossele Freshwater Center. That I'm bringing that up tonight because I have a dead body. I have to get that out probably today. Um, and, uh, and then the other is we've gotten a contract from Essex County. Each year Essex County gives the town sixteen hundred dollars towards its youth programs. And they just set their standard contract up for that.
Complex contract. It was a lot of.
Did I, did I share it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. No, it's overdone. But in any case, but that's, that's that. So maybe you have a, a resolution authorizing you to sign both of those.
Thank you.
Laura, sorry, second? Dana, seconds, any discussion?
Just, um, what grants have you applied for and what grants do you expect to apply for in the next three to four months?
Has nothing to do with that. We can talk about that in a second, which is talking about my contract.
Okay, it's a grant, so I thought that would be an appropriate time, but it's not imperative.
Yeah, I just have to re-execute. That's all right. We'll talk about it next. Uh, so any other discussion? All in favor? I, both, period. Uh, I mean, I'm switching. I do have, uh, John and I. Have, uh, met with and talked about our summer staffing program for the, uh. For the parks department. I'd ask permission to bring this up even if it's not on the agenda. And each of you have a copy of the draft resolution. John, can you come up? Talk to us for a sec, please. Yeah. Oh, thank you, Nicole. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
John, you can say it. Nicole, thank you so much. All right, John. So, uh, I've given copies of the resolution, uh, for the board members to look at. I know there are probably a couple of questions and I did, uh, my best to talk about it. Uh, but basically, uh, we interviewed with, uh, Casey Santo. Um, who, uh, has, uh, you know, enough experience or qualifications to, to assist with the parks department. Uh, eighteen week, pretty much an eighteen week, uh, gig. Uh, at twenty, twenty dollars an hour, thirty, thirty hours a week to be paid out of already budgeted funds and, uh, without benefits. Um, and, uh, so that's the first one. The other one would be with Chip Grunden. Uh, to maintain sort of the way Chip has done things over the past few years. Uh, and they authorize him to, uh, work seasonally at the rate of eighteen an hour for twenty hours per week to be paid out of already budgeted funds. Now, there's going to be some questions about that. So let me first, uh, is there a motion? Is there a motion to make it? Is there a second to approve that? All right, questions? Go ahead.
Why is it discrepancy? Chip's been here for a ton of years and then, or I don't even know how much, and then this person is coming in.
Fine, I'll answer that one because that was what I did. Um, it's, it's us doing the math with the budgeted funds. So we calculated that there was twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, in that account after the payment of John and Ashton. Uh, for the remainder of the year, um, and we were looking at trying to get to Chip, uh, Chip, uh. His W two is he came fifty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred dollars last year. Uh, was shooting for something around six thousand this year. Uh, and, uh, and Casey is, was, you know, just answering the act that we put out like that. Casey would be the thirty hour a week, uh, person. That's all. I'm, I'm okay with, uh, we had, the board wants to modify it and the, uh, you know, uh, for Chip, that would be fine too. I was just working within the, the money for the, you know, the members of the budget.
And how many weeks would Chip be for the eighteen weeks as well? Have we ever determined? Kind of up in the air with Chip. So we could easily make it up if he got done a week early or something like that.
Yeah, totally. Or if he wanted to take one from one side and put it on the other and have them the same. Nothing would change as far as time.
Yeah, I'm okay. So.
Or, or, or whatever, if you may. I, I would be inclined to give Chip a little more. He's been here a while.
I think this would be my recommendation. I mean, it's kind of a, he's been here for a long time. He's kind of paid his dues and. Knows the routine. So I think he should be getting the same as the new guy.
All right. So, uh, what we're going to do is a motion to amend that previous motion to. Alter the, uh, uh, resolution authorizing John to hire Chip at twenty dollars per hour. So that's the motion is there.
I thought we were giving them both nice.
I thought we were giving them both 19.
Or, I just said if you made it 19, the time wouldn't change, but Chip's time is more fluid, kind of big with when he leaves and when he, you know.
Yeah.
So, I don't think, I don't think giving, I don't think it's going to change anything too much if they were.
We've got a healthy fund balance. I think we could find an extra $1,000.
I know. I stuck to the budget, but, so, so the motion is to amend the previous resolution to increase Chip's rate from 18 to 20. I have a motion to make that amendment.
I'll make it.
Darren, is there a second?
Okay.
Laura, questions or discussion?
I have a question.
All right then.
If we're going to bring Casey on for 30 hours a week, do we have to pay benefits because he's over 29 hours? He's always part-time. Do you have to give him anything or no? Is that not a gamble or not?
Does he have 29 hours?
Nicole, because he's 30 hours, there's no benefits. You know he's part-time, right? Okay.
Because he's not a full-time employee.
Right, because he's not full-time.
Well, I'll tell you what.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
So, if I were reading this and I said without benefits, I'd be shooting for that as the operative. So, all right, we'll keep them. What can you do?
Because a lot of times if they said that in 29 hours, even goes part-time, if it's 29 hours, if you go to 30, it considers full-time. It's a New York State law.
What's up with you?
Yeah.
As far as, I can't see. I don't know which one I'm looking at.
That's the resolution.
Yeah, because normally.
Yeah, you're completely on board.
We better check that, to check that because.
Okay, well, hang on a minute. Okay, so.
We might have to do maximum of 30 hours exactly.
No more than 29 hours. Okay.
What did he sign up for? What is the, what is the assumption of?
All right.
30 hours a week.
About 30 hours.
He's, he's under that assumption.
Yeah, but if, I, if we told him 29, I don't think, you know, I think he'll be.
He's also aware there's no benefits.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this someone you knew prior to him applying?
I don't, no.
Okay. Do you want to wait for more applications or you want to hire this person?
I could use them right away. Yeah. We have, we had another one that kind of.
Yep.
Messled out.
Didn't want to come in.
There were two applications.
Can we have enough work for two people?
Yeah.
Okay, so what is now the resolution? Should we make it to 29 and no more?
I'd just leave it as is and then maybe put a clause in there about.
Okay.
Benefits based on New York State or something.
I mean, if you're required at 30, then it's 29. And if you're not, then it's 30.
So, you're authorized to hire up to 29 hours.
Correct.
There you go.
Should there be something in here about them being an at-will employee at the discretion of the park superintendent and town supervisor?
Park superintendent.
Park superintendent. What does that even mean? At-will? I have no idea with that.
I don't know what that means.
That just means either one can leave freely. There's no contract that says it. So, why don't we strike out the, why don't we strike out the, where's the phrase?
You can only vote it just as a part-time employee and then get this technical.
18 weeks. Well, I'm trying to authorize John to be, we're authorizing John to make the hire.
Okay, gotcha. I see the difference.
Yes, thank you. So, why don't we scratch out the 18 weeks and just go part-time seasonal employee the way Chip's is? I have so many versions of this stupid thing that I can't figure it out. Part-time seasonal worker. Strike out the 18 weeks sort of matches Chip's. All right, so, so modified. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Closed. Period. Thank you so much. All business. I will talk to you. Go ahead. Go ahead. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Quick conversation with John before you leave?
Yep.
Okay.
So, John, we know that parks, also enclosures, buildings and things like that. We just had a discussion about what we have for fund balance. And we know we have tons of needs, both on our buildings, in our parks, in our cemeteries. Can you give us, maybe before next meeting, a list of some of those needs and what you think for appropriate or approximate costs? So, when we're looking at fund balance and all of a sudden, kind of like we did with Eddie. And Eddie says, "Hey, I've got, you know, $600,000 worth of stuff due over the next 10 years." We had some type of list from you that says, "Hey, I'm going to need to put a new roof here. I'm going to need to spend $50,000 on this and whatever." I'm not looking for $1,000 items. I'm looking for high-ticket budget items. So, when we know, all right, in five years, we're going to need a new parks truck, whatever it may be. And we can, we know that there's got to be $50,000 set aside. That's really all I'm looking for. So, when we do that, and that way, you're taken care of as far as your department. And there's no surprises to us and be like, "Oh, well, you never told us that you needed a new truck next year." Nope, you added down.
Yeah, just specific to my department or the town as a whole.
Anything that you take care of in your department. So, like I said, buildings, parks, anything that you help take care of. I mean, you help take care of the cemeteries as far as maintenance, things like that, light poles, things like that.
Light poles, Jesus.
So, speaking of light poles, I just want to add to what Darren said. I, I agree. And I would just add, it doesn't have to be something that will need to be done in five years. It could also be something that should have been done three years ago. Deferred maintenance. I know there is a lot of deferred maintenance, which is a very polite phrase that I learned.
Light poles at the beach where we're red dead mode. We don't have kayaks. It's, you know, you know, so put it to figure out, you know, canoes. But 7,000 bucks in kayaks or 10,000 bucks, just so we have these figures and we know. People typically want kayaks before canoes, but things like that, yes. Well, whatever. It was just a, it was a number.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry. Anything else for John?
The playground?
Yeah.
What's the plan?
Yes. It's been ordered, right?
I don't know.
I don't. I don't know either. Yeah, so.
Yeah, ask me about a color. Can we have a color?
It was a Macau against the color, wasn't it?
Yeah. Which, what color?
It was black.
Green.
Yeah, we're going to go, I'm going to take a picture. I'm going to take a picture of the mush bit. Send it to him saying, "Here, here you go."
I would ideally like to do it when there's help around.
Sure.
Midsummer, possibly, definitely fall. Just probably, like if it came tomorrow, we won't be doing it in the short term.
Exactly. So, hang on a minute. Well, I'll tell them the color to what expected date is. Bingles, okay?
Thank you. So, new employee, what hours are we dividing them up? How is that working with?
Yeah, so John, John and I met with him for a while and we also, I met with Chip too. And, yeah, we're working, it's mostly the weekend when after late Memorial Day hits.
We said ideally if he could work, I know people have plans for Memorial Day and it's close. So, we said ideally if, if you could at least work it so you're here a day over Memorial Day, the whole weekend would be great. A day would be a necessity.
Right.
Whereas if you clean the bathrooms and do the garbage Friday afternoon, it's essentially the same as doing it Saturday morning, which would then get you to Sunday morning. And then if he did it Sunday before he left, that would cover Monday and then. But we told him the, the main reason, one of the main reasons you're here is because the beach has gotten so overwhelmed and there just really needs to be someone sort of around on weekends to do garbage every day, clean the bathrooms every day. The bathrooms could be cleaned two or three times a day on like a Fourth of July weekend type thing.
You told us to Chip or to Casey?
Casey. So, we said we work, if, if he's doing, we figured since we work six to noon, or six to 2:30, six to noon would be the six hours. So, three days at eight hours is 24 and then six to noon would make up the six, which would be a clean dirty. So, we said, you know, it doesn't matter if it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. And if he's going to be here, you know, ideally, he would work the same schedule as us when he's here. But we said on weekends, you can come in six to 2:30. It's perfectly fine. Seven to 3:30 is fine. But I said the later you wait in the day, the more you give people a chance to get to the beach and then they're just in your way. You know, like, are you cleaning? Can I come in the bathroom? Are you doing this? Are you doing that? So, just, I said seven is probably ideal for weekends.
Yeah. The Fourth of July is on a Friday this year, you know, so, you know, and last year, I know Chip, Chip tended to do the Sunday morning bit. And, you know, catch angry, and it's just too much stuff on your, on your summer schedule. Plus, John has a lot of extra work anyway, like he and Ashton cannot maintain painting and railings and mowing the lawns and getting the flowers and getting banners up and things like that. So, this guy hopefully will be able to.
So, Casey's doing both, Chip what Chip normal does, which is.
He's going to, two days during the week and tentatively a few hours on Sunday. Or if Sunday's covered fully by Casey, then he can do his two and a half days during the week with us. We just haven't got back to each other. We were kind of going to have this meeting and make sure everything was okay numbers-wise before we kind of made anything concrete with Chip, with Casey, everything. It's everything we just said.
Casey will be in the signers employment paper.
I would call him. He said I, we'll get ahold of him tomorrow and then he can come in Friday to do, you know, all of the onboarding.
Onboarding.
How old is he?
33, 31?
1990.
30-something.
Okay.
30, between 30 and 35.
You sure?
It's from Wilmington.
Those are both good answers.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Public comment. Anybody something for the board? I mean, Randy first, please.
Say somebody pays $20,000 in land tax. What percentage does the town get of that from the county?
So.
Products and that.
Yeah. See if I have a copy of the bill. You know, I mean, most of it went to the county. The town, the town's rate is. Well, I don't know. Okay, I can look it up.
Okay.
Is there some follow-up to that?
No.
Okay. Thanks. Steve, you said?
Just for like future note, down at Jay, we're going to get a new salt shed. $600,000 for a salt shed. That's not a finished building. When you're looking at your fund balance, don't cut yourself short. That's all I'm saying. You know, the salt shed is empty. There aren't any lights in it. Nothing fancy. We'll use it to test that. We're actually having to meet more money on the salt shed with one of the contractors.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I can't play. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Bob Leger. I'm a new resident here. I know a bunch of people in the room. And I had a pleasure of helping the firehouse this weekend out of open house. Just wanted to tell you, it was very delightful working with a lot of young people there that actually work. Just wanted to share that with everybody. And I did join the firehouse, I promised Dana that a year ago, and I kept my promise. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Tina, want to give a report on what that means referring to?
Oh, yeah, we have an open house and we had probably 75 people show up. Yeah. It was a great time. It went very well. They demonstrated the trucks. We did hot dog members, gave out goodie bags. We had tattoos for the kids and adults too. And everybody came. One, we haven't had one probably in 12, 14. It didn't really good turnout. We wanted everybody who did come. And we told them about our training stuff, what Bob was referring to about the younger kids. We've had a lot of young people under the age of 24, 25 join, and it's been great. A lot of young people that are interested in becoming the MTE, some women taking the class and join. And it's been really great to see the enthusiasm. We have some junior members that have joined. They're really excited. They can't wait to turn at the age of taking the class. We've got some new firefighters that just took the firefighter one. We've got, so it's been really great. We've, for the longest time, we were 23, 24 members, fire and EMS together. And that was our roster for the longest time. And now we are hitting 60 on our roster. We're ready up there. We're getting up high. Not always the list, everybody showed up, but when they do, you can count that. We've got people there. If it's a bad volume, candidates, people are going to show up and help you, which is great. So, we have a safe community. We have a loving community and now people are here to help and we're grateful for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Any update on grants or you want to do that?
Oh, wow, okay. You know, what we've discovered, so there are two grants right now. We were looking at that park script. Both Chris and I realized that it's sort of, you need to have all of your ducks lined up in a row because we needed engineering reports and, and letters of support. And there's all these things on the list that we have to submit as supplemental exhibits to the application. And what happens is they give you a very short window unless you have that sort of stuff lined up. So, the key is, is us to keep an eye out. There's going to be like a DOT grant. So, Steve mentioned the salt shed. So, they're trying to figure, or is it DEC? It was DEC. So, something's coming up. And they're trying to, when we were at the, at the salt production conference, they're trying to keep an ear out for when they expect that window to open. So, towns can get their act together, get the documents ready and, and then submit. So, for the parks, for example, we would need some drawings, estimates, all these things that are sort of like sitting there, ready to go. Because I know we've had a lot of, we had people coming in to talk to us about, you know, we'll make a contribution to put up some sort of roof system so that they can skate with a roof system. And, but we don't have any numbers for that and they want us to, you know, what kind of numbers and things like that. So, it was a learning experience for us just diving in, going through the application, realizing where, we don't have any real experience but what to look out for so that if we identify one going forward. Darren mentioned the grant. That seems pretty big. I'll have to go talk to the county about that. That may help us with Lake Everest. But at the same time, so for us, we're such a small office, you know, it'll take us a few times to get, cut our teeth as a grant writing expert. The other, the other one that we're doing is the comprehensive, but that's through the county. Sorry, Celia.
I just always wondered why we don't have a grant writer as experienced. You know, other towns do.
Yep.
I know it's not cheap, but still, in the long run, they know what they're doing. These officers are getting grades once a night.
Right.
A lot of them use the county.
Me, it would be money well.
Celia will be shocked to hear that I agree with you. First time for everything.
Thank you. No, but I mean, it's a big.
I agree. Yeah. No, I was pushing for, remember, during the budget conversation.
I know.
Thank you. You had something?
I could say a lot of the towns use the county grant writers. They go out to the county and meet with the county out there and they use them out at the county. I know a lot of the towns do that now. And I was just going to tell you that if, when you meet with the youth center, connect meeting, if they go out, if your director or your president goes out and meets out at the county, they do grants out there like sports grants, like $500 sports grants and different grants that they'll sit down and write with your youth group itself and let them apply for the grants. And then they can get like $500 different grants and stuff like that for their programs.
That's very well, you know, that they love that. But I think we need somebody, oh, to initiate this, to, that would be their job too.
Thank you.
To find out what's available. You're not going to get a mall, I know that.
We also got the one for, replace the culvert on John Bistro.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
For fresh wires.
Yep.
And maybe that would be, maybe that would be a job where we could share it with, say, Armond or Jay or another town, another Essex County town. Because, yeah, I mean, it could be a full-time job or it could be a really part-time job just for Wilmington. But it would be a great job for the right person. It would help the town a lot. town a lot.
Anybody else? Oh, thank you, motion to adjourn, dismiss?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you all, thank you for coming.